Good afternoon and welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectment for April 28, 2014. I've called to order the meeting. First item on the agenda is the future meeting dates. And I guess we're meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
May 1st?
Yes.
Which will be the reorganization of the board. And then after that, we meet again on May 5th, which is the first night of town meeting. And every night before town meeting in the high school. We're not sure how long town meeting will go, but it will be every night before the town meeting. And after that, I guess we just have to wait and see.
The other thing I might add, and I don't know if it will impact us at all, but we're talking about the timing, the time of that meeting, and in light of that email today about the citizens petition, we might just want to keep our eyes open to... Because the warrant committee seems to have an awful lot of questions with respect to that citizen petition. I don't know that it impacts us at all, but...
We schedule to meet at 6:30 each night?
6:30 each night, yeah.
I think they're looking for comments from the planning board.
Mostly, yeah. Yeah, so I don't know that it impacts us, but it's just...
This is the fair nursery?
Yeah.
Citizens petition, yeah.
That you want to meet a little bit earlier than 6:30?
Well, you might want to just kind of touch base with the warrant committee and make sure that we don't... That they're not going to need us in anything. I don't think they will, but...
What they're looking for is just feedback as to how to recommend it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
At town meeting.
Yeah, so I don't see it as involving us, but...
Right. We could meet at 6:00 the first night and then change it to 6:30 the other nights if we don't need to meet earlier than that.
How is the... Have you anything for that agenda?
Not yet, no.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. So do you want to change it to 6:00 the first night?
Yeah, why don't we do that, just to be safe?
Just the first night?
Yeah.
First night?
And then every night 6:30 after that.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the payroll vendor warrants.
Move to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number four is citizen speak. Anyone here for citizen speak? Okay. Hi Keith, how are you? Actually, you know what? Keith, would you mind if... Because Bill is going to leave, right?
Yep.
Bill has got to leave. He just has something very quickly say.
I wish to retract a statement I made at the March 18th Conservation Commission meeting and apologize to the Milton Times and the report of Laura Griffin. The item in question was correct, and the other statements that I made were not appropriate. They weren't correct. I'm sure Ms. Griffin and I will not always agree in the future, but I respect her efforts to keep the public informed.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Keith?
Yeah.
Evening. Evening, if you could introduce yourself.
Keith Mills. I reside at 39 Hawthorne Road, and I also own a speed van at 25 Central Ave. in Milton as well. I'm here just to make a quick comment in speaking with several people from the town regarding the 40B comment letter. I'm under the impression that the purpose of the letter, although it has many purposes, but one of the purposes, it seems, to maybe provide a roadmap and future dialogue as we work down the road on this project. And as I've stated before, you know, we need development there. I think the way as it stands, you know, with their initial proposal, you know, we don't... I agree with what you say there, and I just want to compliment the board and everyone who was involved, you know, writing the letter, that given what could be happening, what will be happening, I think it provides, at least my interpretation, future discussion and perhaps an opportunity for both the state, the Conleys, and the town to see kind of what we need in order to get there. And I'd like to think that no matter how positioning can be with them or whomever, that really the greater good is what's going to be best for the neighborhood and the town. And I really would like to believe that's what's going to happen. And in looking at the letter, it gives me the impression, at least the town, is taking a good initiative to say, you know, "We're not saying no. We're saying we'd like to see this and we'd like to see that." And if that's my interpretation of it, which I think it is, I just want to thank you for that. It also makes me feel good that, you know, not only do I live in the neighborhood, but I also work in the neighborhood, that you guys are looking out for us. So I just want to say thanks.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
Appreciate it. Not too many people say thanks, right?
No. It's nice to hear it every so often.
Anyone else for citizen speak? Mr. Jackson?
I'm Peter Jackson. I live on Capen Street, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2. There are a couple of things I wanted to note. One is I got my warrant for town meeting, and I was surprised and concerned at the number of planning board articles that are on there. A year or so ago, we established a regular fall town meeting with the express purpose of keeping the May town meeting shorter by moving planning board articles and zoning articles to the fall. So it concerns me that this is going to be... That's the biggest warrant I've ever seen in my years in town meeting. And, you know, some are very controversial and will take a significant amount of time. And I just think the notion of holding zoning articles for the fall town meeting, I think, was a good one, a legitimate one, and I'd like to encourage the board and the warrant committee to continue that process. I don't know if there's a requirement with a citizen petition that it has to appear at the next town meeting, you know, and maybe the citizens petitions have to be pushed. I really don't know. But we're going to have a very tough town meeting this time, and we expressly tried to avoid that by scheduling the fall town meeting. I also want to make a few comments about the Hendry's property. There are two items on the agenda. The first, the public hearing, I believe, is about a demolition order. I support you very strongly on that. As you know, the building as it stands now is a real hazard, and eyesore into hazard to the neighborhood and to the community. And I know you've been trying to work both with the owners and doing what you could do to effectuate getting both parts of the building taken down, and I encourage you to keep doing that. And I know there's that unknown ownership piece, and I don't know how that fits in. But I really am thankful for you to continuing to push the issue. We've got to find a way to get that building down. The other part on the agenda is the 40B comment letter. I saw a draft of the letter. That was a while ago, so I don't know exactly where you are with it. I thought the draft was very good and included, you know, many items that I testified at a hearing and other people testified. There are a couple items that I don't think appear in the letter that perhaps should, but maybe there's an opportunity to address them later in the process. There really isn't anything about the property ownership, both the owners and the developers, who are the same people but different legal entities, and there's actually three different legal entities involved. And I don't know how they conform to the state requirements for ownership on a 40B development. So I'd encourage... You know, I think the letter might be a good place to address that, or maybe subsequently there will be an opportunity to address what the legal requirements for ownership for 40Bs are and to what extent this property complies with those. And the other item that I noted, both with the previous application for a 40B development and the current one, has to do with some of the financials that are contained in that. And I don't know, again, whether, once the state gives approval at this stage, if they're accepting those financial statements or if that will be a continuing part of the project review. For example, I know that the proponents claim a land acquisition cost of $2.5 million for the property, and that's really way out of the ballpark. And there are profit limits, you know, in a 40B development. And, you know, if they're able to get acceptance of a $2.5 million acquisition cost for that property, which is ludicrous, it, you know, it bumps up their ability to make a profit well beyond it. And this isn't the only case. I mean, there are all kinds of things going on in 40B and the development finance things that have been going on with 40B in the state. So I hope that the town can either comment on that now or if that becomes part of... If the pro formas and the financials become part of the review when the project comes back to the ZBA.
I have a question on that. Are you saying the land is not worth $2.5 million?
I don't believe that it is. I, you know, I know what they paid for it when they bought it.
Right.
And I know they've had taxes and carrying costs and things like that. But I... In its current condition with the building there, I'm... I don't believe it is, but I'm not an expert. You certainly have more expertise than I do, but I would hope that that would... That number, you know, would be among... I hope the review of the financials for the project is part of the continuing review.
I can tell you, Pete, that on a 40B, regardless of what you pay for the property, it's appraised value that winds up in basis.
That's right, and there has not yet been an appraisal.
Is it what basis?
The appraised value. It's not the purchase price.
Right.
It can be an appraised value, and I know the application did not include an appraisal.
Right. But when they do the cost certification, and that's what they're going to base the profits on, we'll be on appraised value.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
You take 57 units times...
It's just the land acquisition cost will be based upon the land appraisal, not the purchase price.
Maybe other people here for citizen speak who wanted to...
Hang on one second. Yeah, I get it.
Okay.
Margaret Dunham, 41 Central Avenue, and I'm here to comment on the comment letter. I think it was excellent. I couldn't do a better job myself, but I do have a...
Not what we hear.
I beg your pardon?
Not what we hear.
I do have a couple of concerns about the letter. You refer to it as "the site of the proposed project is generally appropriate for an affordable housing development." Now, back when, this 131 was before the planning board, the residents of Elliot Street going up from 136 and beyond did attend the meetings, and many of them could not speak English, but they were there. And in general, I spoke for them, but as I said, they were present at the meetings. They finally gave up. And so my concern is that you're saying in the letter that this is a site that's generally appropriate for an affordable housing project. I wonder if you included that in the same letter that you responded to with Milton Muse up Land U. and/or 711 Randolph Avenue? Because we're talking about a neighborhood of hardworking, in some cases immigrant people. There are three Asian people that do not speak English. They rely upon their children to translate for them. And I would hate to have them think that their neighborhood was selected for the affordable housing because they were poor and minorities. Just mentioning that. Secondly, once again, yes, the letter requests commercial. And you know that I have been experiencing the parking nightmare that has developed as a result of 36 Central Avenue. The back parking lot is always filled, and so are the streets. And I see them parked right on the street, up and down, on my side, going across to either the New You, the Nails, or next door, the flip, same thing. There's just not enough parking in the area, and I am very, very concerned. If you approve additional commercial at 131 Elliot, that will bring more parking nightmares to that area. 95 Elliot Street was one of the three areas that was mentioned in the Urban League Institute when they came up with the idea of the mixed housing, which then went before the town meeting. And 95 Elliot Street was supposed to be mixed housing as well, used as well, with a housing component as well as a commercial. 95 Elliot Street does not have a housing component. It is all commercial. And so it would seem that that commercial makes up for commercial at 131 Elliot Street since there is no housing at 95 Elliot Street. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret.
And I just want to... I'm looking forward to hearing about the demolition of the building. And is that a public hearing? Does that mean that citizen can speak about the demolition?
I guess so. We can make that determination at the time?
Yeah, I guess it's up to the chair.
Mr. Jim, and when you opened the meeting, at the last meeting, you stated that the comment would be taken at citizen speak and there'd be no comment during the public meeting. Do you want to continue that same vein for this evening's continuation?
Yes.
One thing I have to point out to you is that for all the years I've been coming here, I am becoming older and deffer. So I did not hear what Emily said.
I'm sorry, let me speak up. At our last meeting, when we opened the public meeting, the chairman spoke, and he said that all comments would be taken during citizen speak, and he wasn't not going to have a comment period during the public meeting period.
During the public meeting?
During the public meeting period, yes.
Okay.
So I asked him if he wanted to continue that same...
Position.
Format for this evening.
And what did the chairman say?
I think we'll keep it the same.
Okay.
And so if you have anything else to say, say it now.
If I have anything to say about that, I should say it right now.
Say it now, yeah.
All right. Well, I have to say that I have been blessed by the trees that have grown in my backyard, huge landscape project. And that has shielded me from the horrible sight of that 131 Elliot monstrosity. It doesn't shield me from the pollen that's growing there, that has grown there and continues to grow there when it comes through the trees. I am concerned about that when they take down the building and also whatever else is going to be coming down, including the asbestos and so on and so forth. And so I am hoping that all of this will be taken into consideration when you go ahead with the plans to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret.
Anybody else for citizen speak?
Okay. Mr. Chek, I just make one statement with respect to...
Yeah.
In terms of the phrase "appropriate for affordable housing" and distinguishing 131 Elliot site from Milton Muse and from the Randolph Ave. site, I think primarily what we mean by that... First and foremost, affordable housing is workforce housing. It's meant for people at 80% of area median income. Those rents are set at rates that are well above what low-income housing would be. So it's not taking low-income housing and sticking it in a neighborhood. It's taking workforce housing, and only 25% of the stock at that. But secondly, that area is truly a smart growth area because it's next to public transportation. It's next to a considerable amount of commercial space. So it's a place where a person can live and shop within the district they're living and have access to public transportation, which the other sites don't have.
I agree. I was going to bring that up during the agenda item itself, but...
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, we'll move on to number five on the agenda, which is the 131 Elliot Street public hearing, and this is a continuation of the last night. We'll invite up Brandon Moss, the council for the town, and Attorney McDonough, who's representing the developers.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, and the building commissioner, I apologize, Joe Prandak.
Help me to stay back there.
So when we left off, we took a vote, two to one vote, to extend deadline, I guess, until today. And you had a meeting, and I don't know how this meeting went. Are we... Can we talk about this, or what happened?
Well, I can bring you up to date a little bit, Mr. Chair.
Bring us up to date, yeah.
And the two attorneys can probably fill in where I can't, but we've had a couple of pretty productive meetings. I had a meeting with the Conleys first to come to a basic understanding of what we wanted in terms of the indemnification agreements on both sides and in terms of what we wanted to get the building down and the urgency of getting the building down. I think we all agree to that. We've since... Each attorney has worked at drawing up a whole harmless agreement. There are differences in those two agreements as it stands right now that have to be still worked out.
Two agreements?
Well, each side, we prepared a draft of the agreement, and Mr. Conley's attorney prepared a draft of the agreement. Obviously, there are differences in the two agreements. Actually, I think it was our agreement went to him, and there were some modifications.
One agreement with Conley's.
With Conley's, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it's one agreement with both Conley's.
Right. So there are still... There's still things to be ironed out, but essentially it does indemnify... Well, not indemnify, but hold harmless both sides from...
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes. This was also sent to you today.
No, I did read it.
So it does hold harmless both sides in terms of, you know, neither side will sue the other. It does provide for release of lawsuits and...
Neither side will sue during demolition.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. There are still some logistics to be worked out in that.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I happened to walk in early for this meeting, and the town administrator was in a meeting with our town council and with Mr. Conley and his attorney. I think there's some further updates that can be reported on.
Well, are you finished bringing this up to date?
And then we basically have come to, on the Conley's side, a timetable for when things are going to happen, and it will be memorialized in an agreement.
In a future agreement? It's not in here, right?
Actually, it is in the agreement that Attorney McDonough sent back.
Yes. Right here?
On May 28th. So on May 28th, they have to apply for a demolition permit.
Close to the agreement?
Yes.
On the same day, they have to apply to the Milton Conservation Commission. Go ahead, Brandon.
Yes, so in terms of the agreement, and I have tracked changes version in color. It's helpful in terms of seeing what the changes were from Attorney McDonough.
Katie, do you have yours? I have a... They have it, Brandon?
Okay. So basically, in terms of... So May 28th is the deadline. Certainly nothing prevents it from happening before that deadline, but the absolute deadline to get the demolition permit, the MBTA license, and the notice of intent for...
Can I stop you? To get the demolition application, right?
To file a complete demolition application, yes.
Not the permit?
Right. Permit application, yes.
Because you said the permit.
I misspoke. The application for the permit, a completed application for the permit.
Okay, yeah.
Because at least in terms of the Conservation Commission and the MBTA license, the actual issuance of those approvals is somewhat subject to a third party. So that is... But those deadlines are now firm. We spoke to Joe Prandak, building commissioner, and Joe, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but May 28th seems reasonable.
Yes, that's 30 days from today, so that's a typical timeframe.
Just to interject, I think that the May 28th deadline was picked with the understanding that there is a conservation meeting scheduled for June 10. And so if things are... If we hit that May 28 deadline, things will be able to be addressed at the June 10 meeting that's appearing on the schedule.
If what is addressed at the May 28 meeting?
No, I'm saying if we... If these application deadlines... In order to... As I understand it, there's a meeting of the Conservation Committee that is currently scheduled for June 10. In order for this project to be addressed by that June 10 deadline, if everything is... If the applications are all submitted by May 28, the hope is that the matter can be taken up at the June 10 meeting of the current Conservation Committee.
So the notice of intent would be drafted and presented by that date, but the Conservation Commission would not meet, but would hopefully have it on its agenda for the June 10.
Right. Full application.
Yes.
Exactly.
So Joe, what's the delay between now and May 28? What do they have to do?
Well, I think from the developer's perspective, I believe they're in the process of abating what can be abated for asbestos. There is a fair amount of asbestos in the building in the form of what we call a millboard. It's a rigid material, almost like asbestos siding. And most of that is going to be taken out. That's going to take a month anyway. There may be some areas, likely some areas, that they can't do that in because of some safety concerns. But I think even if they were to start tomorrow, we'd be looking at close to a month before it was completed.
You need a certificate of abatement, right?
There are some certificates from the DEP that they will provide when they apply for the demolition permit.
What if they don't meet the May 28 deadline for asbestos? What does that do to the Conservation?
Well, I think if we... You know, the application for the building permit can still certainly go in, but...
The application for the demo permit?
Yes.
Yeah.
If on May 28th, no abatement, no progress on the abatement has been achieved, I think we may have some issues with that, but if the abatement is starting...
From my client's perspective, they thought it was going to take a couple weeks to abate it, so... And they're jumping on that ASAP, realizing that, you know, there is a substantial amount of work to do there, but still they believe it can be accomplished by May 28.
My last conversation with the demo contractor, the asbestos had been inventoried, so they know how much they have. And then that was going out to bid. I'm wondering if they've awarded a bid.
I don't know. I can absolutely follow up on that. I know they're actively following up the abatement issue, so it's...
So there's no abating going on right now? There's no removal of asbestos? It's just they're in the bid process, is that correct?
None has been removed as yet.
Okay, I understood that they had started already. Okay. Do they... They don't need a permit from you, right?
They don't need a building permit, but we do have to discuss some areas that may not be able to be abated because of some safety concerns.
Sure.
For putting workers in portions of the building that might not be safe to work in. And that would have to be ironed out.
Yeah, no, that's on the radar as well. That was discussed in the meetings that have happened this past week.
So what else has to be... So you have the abatement letter before the application. What else do you need for the application?
We would need some documents from an independent structural engineer. I would assume Fred Cowan, the gentleman who was here the other night. He's going to have to put together an initial narrative as to how the demolition would move forward. He would also submit an affidavit saying that he is going to be there and monitor the demolition. We have to arrange for a similar situation with an engineer of our own when we tear ours down.
So you get the narrative from the structural engineer. What about the MBTA?
The MBTA license is... You know, they would... Again, they've applied for that. I'm sorry, they haven't applied for it. They're going to apply for that by the May 28 deadline. When I applied for the license for both properties, I did so with the assumption that there was more potential for intrusion onto the MBTA tracks. After speaking with our consultant, he's assured me that both buildings can be torn down with minimal intrusion onto the MBTA tracks. So it's a matter of how well they can convince the MBTA that they can protect their hardware, so to speak, and their passengers.
So you need a letter from the MBTA, correct?
Yeah, or simply a copy of the, a copy of the license.
Yeah.
In order to actually issue the permit. The application can go in at any time, but the issuance of the permit would be contingent on them receiving that license.
I think we all agree that the contractors are the best, and the structural engineers are the best people to apply for that, as opposed to...
Yes.
The town and, and the Connelys.
Yep. And all through this, these couple of years, this process, they've seemed pretty, pretty well tied to this one particular contractor who's familiar with the property.
For the demolition.
For the demolition, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Orbenheimer, RGI, or something like that. So it may be best to just say, you know, to that gentleman, go to the MBTA and get your license, or get that license process moving.
I think that's what we're intending to do. We think we'll be able to get it done most quickly if, if the engineers and the demolition contractors are actually dealing directly with the MBTA rather than the parties.
When is, you know, when the next meeting after June 10 for the Conservation Commission?
I do not have that date now, but I will get it for you.
How often do they meet?
I think they meet on an as-needed basis.
So Joe, it sounds like the bottom line here is you're comfortable with May 28th as the application deadline for these three permits that need to be applied for.
Don't wait till July?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The three permits, Katie, uh...
Demolition permit, the MBTA permit, license, and the Conservation Commission, notice of intent.
Okay.
All of that being filed and applied for by May 28. As long as, Joe sounds like he's comfortable with it, so we have an agreement on those dates, as long as Joe's comfortable with it.
If something else arises, the end of paragraph one is the catch-all. If there's any other permits, licenses, anything else that has to be required for that we haven't thought of, then they'll promptly apply for it, but there may be nothing. It's just a catch-all.
As always with the demolition, you know, utility cutoffs and coordination with TPW and all of that, but that's typically not, that's routine.
Shouldn't slow things down.
Within a matter of days.
Brandon, when we use Carrick Realty in this first paragraph, I mean Carrick Realty and/or their demolition contractor, that's the implied, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Well, it's ultimately going to be on us.
Right.
If we don't satisfy this.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
I mean, what I can do to paragraph one, to address that issue where it says Carrick Realty Trust must apply, must apply or, or in the alternative, shall cause to be applied.
Yeah. That's fine.
Paragraph two is, deals with the asbestos. I think we've, from discussions, we're going to possibly take that out, or at least indicate that Carrick Realty Trust has not started and, but will abate the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't particularly care if it stays in or comes out, but I just wanted to reflect the fact that we haven't actually started it yet, and I don't want anybody coming back later and saying, geez, you misrepresented that you'd already started the abatement, when that's not the case. The abatement's to come.
Paragraph three deals with the town issuing an RFP, request or proposals. That has, that's contingent on town meeting, or subject on appropriation, so we don't know the date yet, but when we know it, we have a better idea, we'll plug that in. Paragraph four basically is a cooperation clause. Basically, the town and the building owner, Carrick Realty Trust, will cooperate, same for their engineers and for the contractors. What, now we get to the realm of what was adjusted or addressed by both parties. Securing the building, there was a piece of vinyl that came off when we were here last Tuesday. That has, the vinyl has now been removed.
Actually, a piece of wall, but yes. It has been removed.
Okay. So you're satisfied?
Yeah.
It was a facade, and it wasn't structural.
Yeah.
But it's removed.
It's removed. So it was a piece of vinyl, it was a wall, it was a facade, which is...
All of the above now.
Yes, all of the above.
So there's no need to have that in there because it's been taken care of. The next paragraph is about, we're going to have to start adding some language to the version that's before this board, but in terms of staging, because if the town doesn't have a place to stage on, on the property, it's going to have to stage it in the street, which could, you know, potentially be expensive. So Connely has agreed to, or Carrick has agreed to allow the town to stage, allow the town's contractor to stage on the corner of Elliott Street and Central Avenue, and if that's the case, then, then the town would be taking down a piece of the property that overhangs, but the town would be doing so in exchange for using the staging, the area for staging. There's a second piece, which is scaffolding. The town actually, it's easier and necessary in terms of hazardous waste, hazardous materials to have it surveyed, and so Connely is going to allow that to actually go through the Connely building to access. So that's another piece that will be added.
That's a paragraph to be added.
Yeah. That also allows, I think, in terms of demolishing the building, to go from that side as opposed to going from, you know, the, was it Central Avenue side?
From Central Avenue.
Yeah. So, and then we have in here about, each side is going to be demolishing the building concurrently, and for that reason, this whole idea about holding harmless, waiving claims if there's damage to the Connely building, or if there's damage to the town building because the other one is doing demolition work, the parties have agreed to kind of waive, to waive the claims. So it's paragraph, was paragraph eight, now paragraph six, and it'll probably move around again. There is an existing lawsuit, we talked about that last week, and that lawsuit deals with the two orders that were issued by the Building Commissioner under Chapter 143. Once the buildings are both taken down, the parties are going to have that lawsuit dismissed with prejudice, with each party waiving its appeal without costs. So that's it with those lawsuits. What will be coming back into the agreement in some form is what's on page three, which is paragraph 12, or paragraph seven, or paragraph eight, which is basically, there was a cross release, and we had some discussion today about that, and we've come to a mutual understanding, which is that a line in the sand is going to be drawn as of the date this agreement is signed. Everything from the beginning of the world to the line drawn in the sand as to claims that each side has against, or could have, actually has or could have, up to that line in the sand being drawn, will be a waiver. Will be a cross waiver and release.
So the concern that was, that was at issue there was, well, does simply filing the stipulation of dismissal with prejudice adequately protect the parties, and particularly the town, against a claim that comes later on, that nevertheless, although my building's no longer there, I'm still going to sue you for the damage that you did to my building before it came down, that kind of claim? And so we want to make sure that there is a, there's a release of that kind of potential liability in addition to the stipulation of dismissal of, of the appeal.
Without releasing potential third-party claims.
Right. Without, without speaking to exactly claims by third parties that could be impacted by the demolition efforts that go on, and those wouldn't be part of the release language that we're talking about.
Demolition contractors would have to have insurance, obviously, so where those future claims could arise, there also will be a place to point the finger, potentially. So in terms, so the waiver release language is going to come back in in some form. In terms of the agreement, just making sure the town and Carrick Realty Trust are the parties, the proper parties to sign this agreement. This agreement can be signed in multiple instances, that's what we call a counterpart clause, and then paragraph 10, where it shows this paragraph 10 on page four, the parties are going to follow the applicable laws, regulations, codes, such as the building code, in terms of demolishing and removing the buildings. This is a Massachusetts agreement, is subject to review under, or construction or interpretation under Massachusetts law. And then the last page is, and we'll have to fill in the date and have the sides sign it.
What if the dates are not met? What happens then?
Well, this is an agreement. This is a contract. So we could argue that it's a breach of contract. We could, one could argue that it's subject to specific performance. That's a claim where a party goes to court and says, you know, the other party didn't follow the agreement, they need to be ordered by the court to follow the agreement, what's called specific performance. So...
Can that be appealed?
Well, I think it would be a matter of either side, if, either side following the lawsuit potentially and saying that they want to have this agreement enforced.
I think the, sorry.
Just, I'm a layman, I'm not a lawyer, so the May 28 date is not met. We file a lawsuit against them. That's going to take weeks. Then they're going to appeal that lawsuit, which is going to take months.
Well, yeah, I mean, the problem is that the judicial process isn't a quick, is not a quick process, but...
But that's what could happen.
It could happen.
I, I think respectfully, that if we didn't perform, you could go right back to where we were the other night and issue your 139.
That's why I'd like to issue the 139 now.
Yeah, but you're not going to get the advantages of the agreement.
Do it both simultaneously. We can always drop the 139. See, we've had these agreements 10 times before, yet they're in the wastebasket, and I have a feeling this one is going to be in the wastebasket, too.
Well, actually, we've never had a signed agreement.
We've, this is not signed either?
Well, no, it's not signed yet, but this is the closest we've been to a signed agreement.
Well, I'm not signing this, by the way, but somebody else can sign it, but...
Well, I think we've made some substantial progress in the last few days, and I think, Tom, you know, it starts with you having the meeting with the, Mr. Connely, and I guess both Jerry and Stephen Connely initially, and then with the lawyers, and Joe Prondak, and Bill Clark, and others involved, and the town administrator, certainly. So I think we've made a lot of progress on this. I think we have a pretty good agreement here. We've got some additional language that needs to be worked out, as Brandon mentioned, and what I would recommend we do at this point is continue the hearing. We have a meeting scheduled for Thursday. Give the lawyers a chance to finish up the drafting of these provisions that are still open. There's an agreement of principle on them, we just don't have the final language yet. Let's come back Thursday night, continue the hearing to Thursday night, see where we're at, whether we have a final agreement that everybody's happy with. And again, I do think we've made quite a bit of progress here, and I think it's good news that we've made a lot of, that we've made a lot of progress.
That's all well and good, Katie, but we've been in this position a couple of times before, where we were one sentence away from an agreement, and it was, I want to, you know, taken, stricken, is that the word?
Mm-hmm.
And no, we wanted it in, no, he wanted it stricken, deal is off.
Well, I guess what Katie's saying, though, if we continue the hearing, then, then if we don't in fact have a signed agreement...
Thursday night.
On Thursday night, and, or a signable agreement, that both parties are committed to signing, then...
But we were, when we extended it, when you guys extended it to this, to tonight, we were supposed to have something also, yet we don't.
Well, I think we have a very good working draft, and the meeting that I, as I said, I walked in, we were scheduled to meet at 4:30, we had a little bit of a delay, we were 4:50, so there was a meeting still going on between the attorneys, the town administrator, Stephen Connely, and, and Joe, I think you might have been at that meeting as well. I think what we said last week was, we have a limited number of days, we want to start right away, we want to see a real dialogue, real progress made, and I think we're there. I think, we're not at the signed agreement yet, but I think we've made enough progress that I would be willing to continue this hearing until Thursday night. Let's see if we have the agreement in final form. By then, it sounds like we're very confident that we will, and I think Mr. McDonough's involvement in this process has been a big help.
That is a big help. I will, I will say that much. Having Mr. McDonough here is a big help, you know, a real lawyer.
And if we do have a signed agreement, then, then we basically have the same thing as the 139. I, you know, something that we could go to the courts and...
Yeah, I mean...
And ask for enforcement of, just the same as you would under 139.
In fact, you can do both. You're going to have, you're going to have double...
We'd have to...
You're going to have double rem...
We'd have to start the hearing process over again, I think, once we close it.
I understand.
But yeah, we certainly could, yeah.
And in my mind, that's where, that's the direction we will be going eventually, and by the time all these hearings are heard through the court system, they'll have a permit in hand, and then the building will come down.
I mean, time will tell, I guess.
I mean, if I were them, and I am in the same, I'm in the same business, I would, I'd be pulling every stall tactic for the next six months until I get a building permit in hand. That's what I would be doing.
I can assure you that I wouldn't recommend that they sign an agreement if they didn't have every intention of performing it, and we're going to know by Thursday whether they've got a signed agreement. So I think delaying it for two more days to see if we can get an agreement inked is well worth it.
I mean, you're, I'm voting against it. You're getting your two votes, I'm assuming, I can't tell the way they're, I'm just, I'm just telling you what I feel.
Fair enough.
So...
Look, I think we all agree, it's in the interest of the town, and probably of the Connelys also, to get this building down, both buildings, get it down as quickly as possible, to do it as cooperatively as we possibly can, and for purposes of discussion, then I will move that we continue the hearing under Mass General Laws, Chapter 139, until Thursday, May 1st, at 6:30 PM.
Six seconds. Motion being second. Any further comment?
Just that we'll have the attorneys the next couple of days, you're both available to work and try to get this in final form, and are you both available for Thursday evening?
Yes.
Sure.
The only other comment I have is, Dennis, you had asked a question originally about, you know, what happened if a deadline is not met, and we had talked before, I mean, there's two reasons the deadline wouldn't be met. One is unforeseeable circumstances beyond everybody's control.
Such as?
Who knows, but, but, you know, a circumstance where both parties are trying to work forward, and for whatever reason, they can't make May 28th. And the second one is just pure stall tactic, you know, you know, no intent of complying with the agreement. And one clearly would go for an enforcement, the other one probably should have some kind of a reasonable extension of time.
Right. An agreement can always be amended if, if both parties to it are agreeable, but hopefully we've built in a month, and Joe is comfortable that these deadlines can be met.
So what's the repercussions against the Connelys that we have if they do not meet the deadlines, other than 139?
Well, outside of 139, we could bring this agreement to the court system and ask for it to be enforced, and this agreement requires them to take the building down.
All right. On favor?
Aye.
Against, one. It's extended to Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your time on this.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is also the Henry's Building, the comment letter that we have to submit by, I believe, the...
April 30th, please.
April 30th. And, yeah, we'll bring up Bill Tark, our planning director, and our town council, John Flynn. Hi, John. Hello.
Good evening, John.
Bill?
Hello.
All right, Bill, this is, read through this. Katie, you made some comments here, or did you make some edits?
We did.
We have a...
And I gave you the red line. I gave you a finished version, and then I gave you the red line of the changes...
Okay.
Since the other day.
All right.
So we did put some more teeth into it. We did change the formatting.
So Bill, can we go through just each par, not each paragraph, but each, yeah, I guess, paragraph? The introduction, and then the existing development patterns, because you made some very, very good points here. I thought it's well-written, and environmental issues. We'll just touch on, touch on all of them for a minute or so.
Okay.
So the introduction, it is 57 units, 49 two-bedrooms, and eight three-bedrooms.
Let me read through it. Do you want me to kind of summarize in some places?
Summarize it, yeah.
Very good. Although the board views the site of the proposed project referenced above as generally appropriate for an affordable housing development as a threshold matter, the application should be denied because the application does not control, the applicant does not control the entire site, which is a project eligibility requirement under 760 CMR 56.04. In addition, the conceptual project design of this project is not appropriate for the site when in fact is, including the height and the mass of the building, and the failure to integrate the building into the area's existing development patterns are considered. The project does not incorporate any commercial use and is simply too large and overwhelming for the site. And we go in and we start talking about the project itself. 57 units, 49 of which are two bedrooms, eight of them are going to be three bedrooms, 25% of this will be affordable. We show the, we have an attachment that'll go with this that will show the three parcels that...
that are owned by 131 LLC. The three parcels are located in the heart of the central business district, in the business district. The largest of the three parcels owned by Carrick Realty Trust, it's sometimes described as 131 Elliott Street. There's a second parcel that's owned by the town, that's approximately 7,045 and a half square feet. There's a rectangular parcel of land containing approximately 1,220 square feet, which is located between the two, and actually, we have an image in there that describes where the parcels are. The site, site control, the applicant does not completely comply with the eligibility requirement set forth in 5604, which provides, the applicant shall control the site. The applicant does not control the entire site. A rectangular parcel, approximately 1,120 feet, is located between the land at 131 Elliott, owned by Carrick Realty Trust, and the abutting 7,045 and a half square feet owned by the town. Carrick Realty Trust informed the board in 2013 that it does not own that square footage. The applicant fails to mention the 1,220 square foot parcel, the fact that the applicant doesn't own it, or that the fact that the applicant is not party to an agreement to purchase it. The town also does not own that same parcel. The applicant renderings included in the February 2014 provisions to the application exercise considerable artistic license. The architectural renderings labeled "image looking west along the trolley tracks" and "image looking northwest along the trolley tracks" depict the parking area and a building located in the 7,045 square foot, which is the town parcel. The town purchases property in 2004, we have not decided what to do with that parcel. The existing development patterns, the town's efforts to revitalize the business district, including the former Henry's Building. The town's been planning for and implementing the revitalization of the business district for over 15 years. In 2002, the board appointed the Milton Village Central Ave Revitalization Committee, which replaced a similar predecessor committee, and charged it with planning for and advising the board of appropriate community development initiatives. In the intervening years, the town has been undertaking the following initiatives to redevelop the district. Consultation with Urban Land Institute, because actually, we'll include the report from Urban Land Institute as Appendix B. The adoption of the planned unit development overlay zoning. As a result of the ULI report, Milton Planning Board devoted a considerable amount of time to drafting planned unit development overlay zoning for the business district. The planning board met with the owners of 36 Central, 9395 Elliott, 131 Elliott, abutters, area residents, business owners, and town officials, and held public meetings on the PUD zoning proposal. Such efforts culminated in town meetings' adoption in May 2006 of the Central Ave Planned Unit Development Bylaw, which was codified as Section 3J of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Milton. That PUD bylaw requires that 10% of the housing be affordable. During the eight years since the adoption of the PUD bylaw, the owner of 36 Central obtained from the planning board a special permit issued under the bylaw and constructed 21-unit, a 21-unit building on the former parking lot, and sold all the residential units, including the two affordable units, and all but one commercial unit, which they're currently using as their own office. The owner of 9395 Elliott elected not to develop a mixed-use facility, but rather to offer the building for lease under the existing commercial zoning. 93 Elliott now houses a highly successful restaurant, Steel &amp; Rye, which opened two years ago. A real estate office currently leased additional space at 9395 Elliott...
Go on to the traffic and streetscapes on the next page, I just wanted to just glance over.
Traffic and streetscape improvements. With the support of the legislative delegation, the town applied for and was awarded three transportation and economic development grants by the Commonwealth for traffic and streetscape improvements. Because of this, and because of the PUD bylaws, we have new year, new mixed-use developments at 88 Worf, 36 Central, an adaptive reuse of the two historic mill buildings at the Nippon City, which are four and six Adams Street. Approval of a major mixed-use development at Two Adams, which would be in front of extra space storage. An adaptive reuse of the large storage warehouse on Adams Street in Milton Village, occupied by extra space storage. Approval of a new market-rate apartment building on Milton Hill House property, 36/50 Elliott Street, with three affordable units. And the revitalization of a former ambulance building and garage for a highly successful restaurant and real estate office. The site is extremely important to revitalizing the business district. And if you use the ULI study and look at page five, it's the largest property in the business district, which is located in the heart of the square. It's the very definition of smart growth opportunity. We go on to talk about, you know, the numerous commercial amenities in the, in that vicinity, a supermarket, a pharmacy, a gas station, insurance agency, restaurants, café, a dry cleaner, pizza and sandwich shops, barber shops, hair salons, liquor stores, all within walking distance of this, this area. The future development issues for the site. That the conceptual project design is generally appropriate for the site on which it is located, taking into consideration factors that may include proposed use, conceptual site design, building, massing, topography, environmental resources, and integration into existing development patterns. That being said, while the site is a good location for an affordable housing development, the conceptual project is not generally appropriate for the site. The following issues need to be resolved before determination of project eligibility may be issued.
Bill, can I just interrupt for one minute? I think the rest of it, all these public safety issues, traffic, storm...
Right.
The rest of this really hasn't changed since the draft we had last week in front of us. I think there was a little bit of expansion on the issue of the lot line, but most of the changes that were made in the draft that we looked at on the 22nd were really about the ownership of the third parcel of land. And we expanded upon the history of the town's efforts to revitalize this area, as Bill just read.
I do have a question on, with respect to that, the 12-inch square foot parcel. Does their application show use of that land, or you can't, we can't really tell?
No, we really can't tell.
Okay.
And then in number six, on the general site, you mentioned the schematics are not drawn to scale and are misleading. What do you mean by that?
Sorry, what page are you on?
There's no page number here.
At the very top.
Oh, page nine.
Page nine. Number six?
Yeah.
The schematics were not drawn to scale and are misleading. The drawing showing that the two single-family homes next to the building, which is only eight feet from the property line, does not accurately demonstrate the way in which the development will dwarf the surrounding homes and other buildings, including the one-story commercial buildings. If you take a look at the pictures that were submitted in the application, it, you don't really know what the distance is between the Connollys' building and the property line. And when you look at it up against the single-family house, it kind of looks the same. But that house is only two stories. The front of the new building would be three stories, the back of it is four stories. And when you look at the, look at the image, there's no real difference in the height level.
They'll determine that, right, mass housing?
That's what we're telling them, that they need to look at the schematic.
Now that you've pointed out. And then you can just go on to the conclusion, Bill. I mean, overall, you're saying it's a good site?
We tried to give them a roadmap for a better project. Said, we tried to give them a roadmap for a better project.
Yep. I think it is very well-written, I think it includes all the things we were looking to get into it.
I think every point in design guidelines, which I think most people are concerned about design, are valid. It is a massive building, it's overwhelming.
I mean, taking a two-story house and putting a four-story building beside it, it creates that canyon that the next-door neighbor will have to deal with. Taking a, putting the, the building on Elliott Street on Central Ave, and having it go up as high as it does when the two commercial properties directly across the street are one story, actually, again, it's build it up, step it back. We don't believe that it addresses the massing issue in this area.
So I think what would be good is if we, obviously, we got this revised draft this afternoon, so I'd like to just take another read-through of it tonight or tomorrow, but I think it's, I think it's substantially there, and there may just be one or two tweaks or something we might need to, minor comments, but...
But vote it tonight?
But vote, yeah. So I guess I would move that we approve this letter in principle, subject to minor revisions to be made over the next day, and authorize the chairman to sign it.
Second. Motion made in second, is any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, John and Doris, for all of your work on this, and Bill, thank you.
The next item is the FY15 capital needs recommendation.
Talk about this, Henry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
What are we looking for?
This is an additional request that was approved by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. It's the $25,000 for the computers at the library. This will be paid out of free cash, it will not be bonded.
Okay, this was because there was some confusion, it was put in both his...
It was put in his one-time money request, and it was put in his capital request.
And it got approved in either place.
Yes, exactly.
Motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for an additional FY15 departmental capital needs in the amount of $25,000 to the general fund for computer hardware replacement at the library.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And number eight is the Friends of Milton Crew Annual Ergathon?
Yes, the third annual ergathon, on Sunday, May 4th.
For anybody that doesn't know what an erg is, it's a rolling machine.
Okay.
It's, it's one of those things, you, you put your feet in the stirrup, and you pull it, and it's a rolling machine.
It's a fundraiser?
Yes.
Yes.
They're pretty cool. They actually have, at the Reggie Lewis Center, they have a national ergathon event for all the colleges, which, I mean, thousands of people attend, it's amazing. It's an all-day, it's an all-day event, so, yeah.
And this is one of the greatest programs to come to the Milton Public Schools?
Is it?
Oh, Crew is...
Great sport, great conditioning.
Oh, the Crew itself.
Yeah, great conditioning sport.
That's very popular.
Okay, we have a motion on that?
I'll move that we approve a request from the Friends of Milton Crew to hold its third annual ergathon on Sunday, May 4th, 2014, at the following locations. The Town Green, the Milton Public Library, The Plate, Steel &amp; Rye, and Starbucks, contingent upon approval by all entities affected by this event, and to approve the temporary display, April 29th through May 4th, of sandwich boards at the following locations. The island by The Plate, the island by Milton High School, the island by Pierce Middle School, East Milton Deck, and by Steel &amp; Rye.
Second. Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Town administrators' report.
I do not have a report this evening.
Neither do I, as the chairman, number 10 on the chairman's report, so entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.